Okay. Good evening. This is the November 1st, 2018, meeting of the Monroe Planning and Zoning Commission. We're meeting in town council chambers. It is now 7:05 PM. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, will the commission introduce yourselves, please, starting on my right?
Ryan Condon, alternate.
Kenneth Wilk, alternate.
Jonathan Paul McCallum, alternate.
Leanna Brosie, commissioner.
William Porter, chairman.
Paul Lisi, secretary.
Michael Riley, vice chairman.
Paul Agatha, planning and zoning administrator.
Scott Schatz, our county engineer.
Barbara Gass, your secretary.
Thank you. Item number three, organizational and administrative matters. We don't have nothing to do with that.
No.
Item number four, general public participation. Is there anyone that would like to address the commission on an issue that's not related to a public hearing? Seeing none. Item number five, general appointments. We have none. Okay, moving on to public hearings. Okay, instructions for a public hearing. There are two sets of microphones for both public address and recording of the proceedings. Due to the need for recording, it is important to stand at the microphone at all times and speak into it loudly and clearly in order that everyone in the room can hear and to capture what is being said. Individuals speaking from the seats will not be heard and will not be recognized to Order of the hearing of an application. Points of order and responses will be entertained. Exhibits will be read for the record. Applicant and/or representatives will present the application and will answer commission questions. The floor will be open to those in favor. The floor will be open to those opposed. The floor will be open to general comments or questions. The floor will be open to the applicant, who may take the opportunity for closing remarks or rebuttal, after which discussion will close. The applicant or his representatives are the final speakers. No comments will be accepted from anyone unless recognized by the chair. All questions and comments shall be addressed to the chair, who will determine if an answer shall be provided and by whom. There shall be absolutely no discussion between speakers and audience. Commission has no intention to limit the right of any person to speak, but asks that speakers try not to be repetitive. Please try to present new information. If something has been said before, the commission would invite you to indicate your agreement with previous speakers. At no time shall there be displays of emotion, such as applause, cheering, shouting, or similar noise. This is critical as this hearing is being recorded. If this happens, you will be cautioned. A vote or demonstration by a show of hands, standing by the audience, or similar action will not be recognized. All parties are requested not to talk between themselves while the hearing is in progress. If you feel a need to talk, please step out into the lobby. All speakers, when recognized, must advance to the microphone to speak. Please state your name and address for the record. The chairman reserves the right to cut off discussion if it is not relevant to the application or is presented in an inappropriate manner. This is a legal proceeding, much the same as what would occur in a courtroom setting. We request that all parties observe the proper decorum that would be observed in that setting. Please turn off all cell phones or similar devices. If you have a need to use these devices, please leave the room and use them outside. Okay, in accordance with Connecticut general statutes, eight dash seven D, a public hearing will be held in the town hall council chamber, 7 Van Hill Road, Monroe, Connecticut, on Thursday, November 1st, 2018, at 7:00 PM, or soon thereafter concerning the following. SEP 2018-07, file 1603A, 425 Pepper Street, I-1 district. Special exception permit application for the reapproval and update of an expired special exception permit, site development plan, approval relating to a new industrial building and parking lot improvements. 425 Pepper Street, LLC, property owner applicant. Complete details and copies of all related materials associated with the above matters are on file and available for viewing in the Monroe Planning and Zoning Department offices. So Will, what do we have for exhibits?
Exhibit number one, special exception permit application. Exhibit two, project narrative. Exhibit three, stormwater maintenance plan. Exhibit four, stormwater management report. Exhibit five, Esco garage. Exhibit six, plan set. Exhibit seven, AOT planner comments. Exhibit eight, a butter notice certified mail receipts and green cards. Exhibit nine, certified mail receipt cards from Aquarian and Department of Public Health. Exhibit 10, AOT engineer comments. And exhibit 11, inland wetlands commission approval. That is all.
Okay, for the applicant.
Good evening. My name is Jim Rotundo. I'm a licensed professional engineer with Godfrey Hoffman Associates. Our office is located at 26 Broadway in North Haven. Before I get started, I'd like to submit into the record the receipts for the notifications that were sent out. I'm here tonight representing the applicant. Growing Designs also with me is Mr. Steve Kidney, who is the applicant and also the property owner. This was an application, as was indicated, that was previously approved back in 2007. Some work had commenced. There was an extension granted, but that extension subsequently lapsed without the work being completed. The work that was completed and associated with that approval was the garage, a three-bay garage to the rear of the property. So we're here before you tonight with essentially the same plan. It has been modified slightly to be updated to the current regulations. The property is about 9.995 acres in size. It's located in the I-1 zone. The property currently consists of an existing wood frame structure in the front, the garage which I just described in the back, and there's an existing gravel drive which goes around to the back of the structure to access the property. There are wetlands located to the rear of the property, to the west, associated with the west branch of the Paquonic River. This application was reviewed by the inland wetlands commission and approved. The applicant is proposing to convert the existing structure in the front here into his business office for his landscape business. He is also proposing a new paved parking area and driveway out to Pepper Street. The parking area will consist of 11 parking spaces, which is what is required for these uses. The parking area will be used basically for the office use in his parking of his work vehicles. There is no retail-type business that goes on on the property here, so the lot is exclusively for the employees essentially. Any equipment that he has will be stored in the garage to the rear. There is no use of any equipment on the site. There's also no site lights proposed with this project. On the existing garage, there are some wall-mounted lights essentially at each door. There's three doorways, or two man doors essentially on each side of the building, and as I said, there's three bays in the front with wall-mounted lights. There is an outdoor storage area proposed in the rear corner of the property. It's about 300 square feet, and it's, that's just used for temporary storage, or storage of materials which are used or brought back from an individual job. It's just a temporary place for them to be stored until they're removed from the site or used on the job. There's also a landscape buffer plantings proposed along the rear property line, a mix of shrubs and bushes, as well as some white pines up in the corner. The site is served, currently served by public water and a septic system for the existing structure. As part of this application, we are proposing a new septic system in the vicinity of the garage. The garage does have a bathroom facility for employees, and that will serve that garage. Stormwater runoff for the site is being handled with a vegetated swale, which is located on the southerly portion of the parking area. This surface runoff will sheaf flow down into that swell. It is sized to handle up to the 20, or, excuse me, the 100-year storm event. It will store the runoff and discharges over a riprap and concrete wear down toward the Paquonic River. That also will hold the first inch of runoff from the paved areas to provide stormwater quality. There's an erosion and sedimentation control plan also prepared for the plan that will be implemented prior to any construction. We have also received comments from your town planner and town engineer, which we will coordinate with and get those addressed and plans resubmitted. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
First, you said you are going to resubmit plans?
Yes, we just received, we received the engineering comments today. We received the planning comments on this past Friday, so we reviewed them. I think we're in agreement of what could be done. I want to have some discussions with Will and Scott, some coordination, so we're going to have to revise those plans and resubmit to address those comments.
So you're not going to be looking to close this hearing?
I don't think, unless they want to put those as conditions of approval, which we welcome, but...
Okay. Ryan, we'll start with you.
No questions at this time.
No questions from me?
No questions.
Just a few things. The garage is two stories? Is that two-story height, or is actual, two levels?
Is that two levels, Steve? Yeah, why don't you come out?
Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Steve Kidney, 265 Center Road, Easton, Connecticut. There's a storage level on the second floor of the garage. It's 14 feet on the bottom and an eight-foot second floor.
So a storage area on the second floor?
Or a storage area.
And you're also putting an addition onto the office?
The addition to the office, just a foyer area. Right now, there's a doorway into the side. What we're proposing is, from the rear parking lot, there's going to be a new sidewalk coming up along the side of the building and a foyer entryway into that existing structure.
That's physically already there, isn't it?
Yeah. The office and the garage are already built. Those are the two things that I accomplished while I had the permits open before they lapsed. So that's, that currently is an office. It was a garage, and we reverted it and put a bathroom in it and reverted it into an office.
So this exists already?
It exists already.
The foyer, the front foyer exists?
Yep. All construction is actually done. It's really just the site work that needs to be completed.
Okay, thank you. Mike?
What's it going to be used for again? Just storage?
I run the garage itself or the property?
The property.
I run a landscape mason contracting company. We have six trucks, about eight employees at the moment. The office is pretty much just for myself, and I, we run the business out of it. The guys come in the morning, the trucks leave, we do our work, we come back, close up shop, go home.
Do you store materials?
No, no, not any long-term materials. Most are things like mulch we pick up on the way to the job, gravel, pick up on the way to the job. Occasionally, there might be some plain material that we'll bring on-site that leaves within a couple of days, but we don't really use it as a storage facility.
Do vehicles indoors overnight?
There's two larger trucks, the rest are pickup trucks. The pickup trucks go home every night with the guys, the two larger trucks. Usually, they're just parked behind the building, and then we keep all other equipment. We own a Bobcat and a couple of sprayers and lawn mowers. Those are all garaged inside.
So no materials are stored?
No. And the only materials we would usually keep on-site might be fertilizer or seed or something like that, which is kept also inside.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any questioning questions or wait to review the revised drawings when they come in. Does staff have anything that they want to bring up at this point?
I do. I just, for the commission, just to get input from the commission to help with our, my coordination with Jim later on, is, one of my items that I brought up was about the sidewalk going into the, to the building is currently flush with the pavement. They're just proposing a line stripe to delineate it. Is that something that's acceptable to you guys? I had suggested that they use concrete sidewalk here. And, you know, for the obvious separation of materials to show that, hey, that's a sidewalk and not just part of the driveway. So I was just looking for some input from you guys to help with the communication.
If I may, just on that, Scott?
Am I reading it right?
This, the, this stripe area here will be on the pavement, and that's the accessible aisle for the handicap space. This area up into the building is going to be a ramp, meeting ADA standards. So Steve is going to do that, I believe, just out of wood frame lumber, the ramp section.
Yeah, the ramp stops somewhere over here, right?
That's correct. About midway, yes.
So this area here and here, what's that going to be?
That was going to be asphalt.
Yeah, so that's what I'm asking the commission. You know, typically handicap walkways are concrete, so I'm just, just so we don't talk about something and come back next meeting and they want something else, I just thought I'd raise that now. I think we should...
So there'll be a guardrail on the ramp, obviously, right?
That's correct.
Yeah. So that's going to create sort of a, you know, a clear designation of where the driveway is, obviously.
That is correct, yes.
Right, but that ends right here.
Yeah. Any code issues regarding that? As far as what, pavement versus concrete?
I don't think so, no. I don't see that again. Is she...
Well, no, they haven't paved the lot yet.
Yeah, they have the full 24-foot width on the driveway in addition to the sidewalks.
No, but Leanna said, is it in? The driveway's not paved at this point?
No, none of the site work has been started yet.
Do you get a lot of non-employees visiting this office?
Do you want to...
None.
What does the members feel about concrete versus asphalt?
Yeah, I mean, with concrete, I guess the only concern is some will park there, but if it's just them coming and going...
Are they going to be delineated in any way?
We could delineate it with a stripe or some other manner.
Yeah, it's fine.
They're showing on the plan a white stripe.
It's fine. You okay? Seems like, seems like the commission feels okay with the two of us.
Good, that's one more thing that will be clarified, so it'll be just what you want when it comes back, so. Okay. That was it?
That was it?
That's all I have, just a question.
All right, well, since this is a public hearing, let me just see if we have any public input, but we will be continuing this to our next meeting. So is there anyone in the public, excuse me, who would like to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Any general questions or comments? Okay, back to you, Ms. Rotundo.
That's all I have tonight, Mr. Chairman. Like I said, we'll coordinate with staff and get the plans back in and hopefully get everything all buttoned up.
So do you think that you would have this ready for our next meeting, which means you would have to have your package into staff by next Wednesday? Is that correct?
Well, at the latest, yeah.
It's coming up Wednesday?
Next Wednesday would be the cutoff for our next meeting.
Yeah, that's, that's going to be tough.
And that's actually even cutting the day off, because our meeting's on the 14th. Right, because the meeting's on the 14th.
You guys not looking to pave this fall?
So here's the...
That's going to throw you off.
We have, we have a kind of a screwy schedule because of, you know, two things. November has five weeks, and we have Thanksgiving.
Right.
So our next meeting is on Wednesday, the 14th, two weeks from yesterday, and our next meeting after that is not until December 6th.
I mean, realistically, realistically, I'd say I'd be pretty hard-pressed. I have another hearing on Wednesday night I'm going to be preparing for, and I'd have to meet with these guys tomorrow. I'm not available, so to meet with them, get all on board, get everything done and back in, I don't think Wednesday is going to happen.
Well, you know, it's not the end of the world in terms of, you can, you can get the, you'll, you'll get the approval later, you can get the stormwater quality done. Don't forget, we got Pepper Street, which looks like it's going to start happening after such a long wait. So we got Pepper Street happening. You know, it might, by kicking it back, it might be better because you might be in a position where we only have, we only have to do the driveway once.
We wouldn't have been done before December anyway, so...
Why don't we do this? Why don't we continue it to the 14th? If you, if you don't make it...
Right, okay.
We'll just bump it to the next meeting, but if for some reason you are able to get it done, it's not concluded that we meet in two weeks.
Yes.
Okay?
Very good.
All right, continue to the 14th.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. 7:26 PM. In accordance with Connecticut general statutes, eight dash seven D, a public hearing will be held in the town hall council chamber, 7 Van Hill Road, Monroe, Connecticut, on Thursday, November 1st, 2018, at 7:00 PM, or soon thereafter concerning the following. SEP 2018-09, file 1604A, 4 Maple Drive, I-1 district. Special exception permit application for the remediation of an unauthorized site clearing and filling with millings, unauthorized installation and use of expanded off-street parking, outdoor storage and driveway access, and remediation of related site disturbances, including regulated wetland upland review area. Robert F. and Maureen T. O'Keefe, property owner applicant. Will, what do we have for exhibits?
Exhibit number one, special exception permit application. Exhibit two, closed site plans. Exhibit three, stormwater management report. Exhibit four, conservation commission comments. Exhibit five, inland wetlands commission approval. Exhibit six, AOT planner comments. Exhibit seven, owner authorization letter. Exhibit eight, AOT engineer comments. And exhibit nine, a butter mailing green cards. That's all.
Okay, for the applicant.
Good evening, members of the commission. My name's David Bjorklund. I'm president of the firm of SPAT Bjorklund Associates, and we have offices here in Monroe, a professional engineer registered in the state of Connecticut. This is an application made on behalf of O'Keefe Controls. I've had a facility located on Maple Drive for a number of years now. Facility started out as an old house. There was an expansion done some years ago to add additional warehouse area and offices to the building, and it was also a loading dock that was incorporated into the building in this area here, and there's an outbuilding here. The facility has basically been confined in this area here. Another point, in the past, O'Keefe's acquired this piece of property. This came out of the Victoria Drive Industrial Park, which through an easement gave them access out to Victoria Drive. This application process actually started as a wetlands violation. They went in and they cleared this area right to the property lines. This area here is an area of wetlands, but cleared this area and put down millings. It accomplished two things, gave them a little additional parking area, and it also, more importantly to the O'Keefes and to their employees, they were able to drive across this area in rather undefined fashion, get to the road on this strip of land that goes out to Victoria Drive, and that gave everyone in the facility access through Victoria out to Main Street and to be able to utilize the light. If you've ever taken Maple Drive and come up to Main Street, and if you want to go either left or right, it's a scary situation. The grade here is very, very steep. Site distance is poor, and as we all know, the traffic during, you know, most of the day, and especially early in the morning and late in the afternoon on Main Street can be very difficult. So what Mr. O'Keefe did was he thought he was doing everybody, and his employees and himself, a favor, and cleared out this area, put down millings, and everybody was able to get access out to Victoria Drive. This came up, as I said, as a wetlands violation. We made application to the wetlands commission to clean up that violation, and the remedy to the violation is to remove all of the millings and replant the entire area. At that point in time, Mr. O'Keefe said, well, if I've come this far, let's go all the way. Let me formalize a driveway out to the existing paved area here. With that came, we had to add stormwater quality features. They're located here and here. And the driveway is located, because we have preliminary plan, which we did share with the wetlands commission, to construct about a 10,000-square-foot building in the future here that would serve as Mr. O'Keefe's expansion area. That's why the driveway takes this hook and runs in this direction. So this is really, I call this Phase One of a two-phase project. As Mr. O'Keefe's business grows, we expect that in the next couple of years, we'll be back in with an application to construct a 10,000-square-foot building in this location here. So this is really a very, compared to most site plans that the commission sees, this is very simple, straightforward, and practical. The driving course here, as I said, was really safety, to get safe egress out of the property and avoid the Maple Street. It also does give trucks access to the site and to negotiate Maple Drive with a tractor-trailer truck is scary. Mr. O'Keefe does give some deliveries. The trucks have learned that they go to Swiss Army first, and then they've learned that they can come in here, come across the property, and back into the loading dock there. So this, this actually works out quite well, and it'll work out very well if we get to the point where we are able to come back and construct the additional building for Mr. O'Keefe's business. There are several staff comments. Some of them are pretty straightforward, and I don't know if the commission wants to go through them.
What do you want through them?
If you want me to go through them. Looking at the planning and zoning comments, as far as the application deficiencies, this was really our firm's fault. We did not, we had an A2 and a T2 survey. It somehow did not get into the package. Mapping is available. We'll provide that to staff with the revised set, and that will answer all of those considerations. In site plan considerations, as far as the planting goes, number three, and I'm going to summarize these, that was all covered in the wetlands approval. As far as the planting that's to be done, the soils testing for the septic system was done as part of the wetlands application. We didn't think it had to be submitted with this, but that's already been done. It's in the file. We'll just make that part of the package to your commission. The disturbance...
Looking at the planning and zoning comments, as far as the, the application deficiencies, th, this was really our firm's fault. We did not, we had an A2 and a T2 survey. It somehow did not get into the package. Mapping is available. We'll provide that to staff with the revised set, and that will, will answer all of those considerations. In site plan considerations, as far as the planting goes, number three, and I'm going to summarize these, that was all covered in the wetlands approval. As far as the planting that's to be done, the soils testing for the septic system was done as part of the wetlands application. We didn't think it had to be submitted with this, but that's already been done. It's in the file. We'll just make that part of the package to your commission. The disturbance and, of the millings, that, that's noted on, on this sheet here, so that, that's already part of the package, so we will get that. That, that's, again, that's. Pardon? I'm pretty sure our regulations are saying that we can't use millings for finished course, right?
Right.
But millings can be used for fill. Yeah.
It's also covered over, yeah.
So, so you don't have to remove.
Well, the Wetlands Commission, I'll, I'll carry that back.
If they're telling you you have to remove them, that, that's, you know.
Yeah.
Their, their requirement, but our requirement is that they not be used as a top coat. They can be used for.
Right, right. I don't, I don't, but to just clarify, this 24-foot wide road or driveway is to be paved. That's the, so that's the, this is, this has been designed, as I said, to serve the facility now and in the future with the expansion. So, no, the, the placing of the millings, and there were some boulders that were put in there, that's what triggered the wetlands violation.
Do you have a wetlands approval yet, or is that pending?
No, we have the wetlands approval.
We don't have.
It's in your.
You might have gotten it earlier. Okay. Here.
Oh, the invasive plant management, again, that was part of the wetlands approval.
It's also noted on, you're drawing S1.
Well, they're there, but they don't really say what's being done.
It says, it says the open area north of the driveway is to be cleared of weeds and invasive species.
It's pretty vague, but okay.
Well, the, the area is pretty open now. I don't think, I don't think it's going to be too difficult to identify, and it's going to, when we remove the millings, the stuff's going to come out. If you're going to scrape away the millings, you're going to be, the plants that are there are going to come out.
The Wetlands Commission also requires a follow-up reporting so that they have a way of assuring that it gets done satisfactorily.
Okay.
Right, and that goes along. We'll get to that. The wetlands approval also, you know, notes the plantings that are to be done, the trees and the shrooms. So we'll incorporate that into the notes, the wetlands notes onto this, and I, I think there won't be any question. The zone boundary, again, that showed up on the survey. We'll get that on with the site plan. I had a question on the, the buffers. There is a buffer. Can you slide this? This is a question for the commission here. There is a buffer, a landscape buffer prescribed along here. This is Route 25, and this is the curve coming down to Maple. This area is, is all vegetated and planted at this point in time. I believe the commission has the ability to waive us doing any additional landscaping in that area. This, what this is, there's a highway discharge here into a ripper half ditch, and I, I just don't see any need to go into this corner of the property. The property next door is, is undeveloped and very vegetated.
Dave, that's not what I'm asking.
Pardon?
That's not what I'm asking. There's two things here. One, another comment earlier, which was your survey comments was to show the extent of that vegetation in a more general way. That will show that. The second is, the one you're talking about, is there is the landscape buffer requirement as far as its, its distance from the street. I want you to show just like a setback line and lay.
Okay, well, I.
And your existing vegetation will be your.
Right, that, that's going to show the, but as far as that, I just wanted to make it clear so that we don't come back. And the commission ends up, I wanted to get the discussion of, do we need landscape?
Yeah, I'm not saying it to.
Okay, I just, I wanted to get that clarified. Okay, I think that the rest of the site plans, I think, were, were in agreement. Now, on the, the 100-foot buffer, Will, you were just talking about carrying it from there.
Yeah.
That's what I thought. Just give you a second here to read through these. Okay, the fence and the guardrail detail, that's not an issue. And the, the wetlands markers and, and posters shown on the plan, they're a little tough to see because there's a lot going on in that area. We'll delineate them differently so that they, that they are clearer. Okay, the, the Phase Two, just to clarify, that was part of the wetlands approval requirement. The wetlands approval is, is set up so that if Phase Two doesn't happen, i.e. the building, another landscape plan kicks into play, so that's.
Is that other plan detailed?
Yes, we detailed that to wetlands.
Well, whatever's on wetlands is supposed to be on the P and Z plans.
Right, but we weren't, it got a little confusing because we're not proposing to do that with this plan here.
Well, there's no Phase Two proposed or being, that would be approved here, so that's why I wanted to get rid of the phase language.
Okay, we can add that.
Yeah, so the way it's set up is that if, if they, they're going to do the remediation, and if they don't build, if they don't come in with an application to put the building up, then wetlands require that they put plantings in that other area that's north of the driveway. Will's correct in that this application should really also have that plan so that, that, at least that is approved if you don't come in with the plans to put up a building within a specified time.
Is there, is there a time constraint on that?
There is. It's listed on the approval. Timing, let's see.
2021, November.
November 2021. So.
So you can tie it to notes about them without using words phases?
We just have a, that similar note on, on our site plan.
Okay.
And then you guys, he, they should submit that plan so you guys could also approve that contingency planting plan.
And for a future note, if, if the future expansion is more of the same, you're going to need a zone change.
Pardon, I can't hear.
If the future expansion plans for the building use is more of the same, you're going to need a zone change.
I fully, fully understand that. So I've been aware of that for a while, and Mr. O'Keefe is aware of that. On B, the plant installation details on D1 should be replaced with industry acceptable details and should also include that for D and B, bald and burlap, I assume, and tree and, and ground cover plantings. We discussed this with the person that, that did the landscape design, who's also currently the head of the Litchfield County Soil Conservation Service, and we had this con, conversation with Scott also a couple of weeks ago out in the field. What we show on this is smaller plants that are, come in pots, and what has been realized lately is that you have a much higher survival rating or possibility if you do smaller potted plants rather than larger trees that are done in burlap. There's a study out by the New York City Parks Commission that indicates that the survival rate of plants is much higher if you start off with the ones in the pots and not the larger ones. And that, that's why we, we detailed that way. That, that came out of a con, several conversations with the Wetlands Commission. So that's, that's why we had, had not, had, why we had, why she had shown pots and not bald and burlap.
Well, that's size, that's not, that's not the detail.
Pardon?
That's the size, that's not the detail.
Well, the, yeah, the detail shows a, a tree in a pot.
Yeah, no, but the, the installation detail is.
So is it the installation?
Well, that's the comment, that's, there's two comments, there are separate comments. One is the detail of the installation, the other is the size requirements of the code.
Okay, but that, that is the reason why we didn't show bald and burlap. If you want a more detailed installation, we can provide that. And, you know, seeing this survival rate is on the.
Well, the red maple tree is going to come balm-burlap.
They're what?
The, the red maple trees that you're closing are going to come in a balm-burlap. They're not going to come in a pot.
I, I can't answer that. That was.
Well, you're specifying a two-inch, two-and-a-half-inch caliber tree. Those are going to come in a balm-burlap. And that's not the size that the code would say for a tree in, in, in zoning, not wetlands per se, but I can tell you that's going to be balm-burlap.
Okay, I have no, no information on that. I, I rely on the people that, you know, we retain.
You know, some of those others may as well, but they may come in a pot, two and three. The tree definitely.
Okay, I'll resolve that. If there is a difference there on the C and B, we're going to always get touch with you. I think that completes the planning comments. I don't think we really had any questions. No, I have, I have nothing marked up here. I think the, Scott, I think, you know, your comments, the, they're just minor additions, personal details. Did you have any that you were particularly concerned with?
Well, the only one that I was a little bit concerned about was the, providing the stormwater quality in a basin needs to be below the invert of the V-notch.
Right.
And I was a little bit concerned because I wasn't sure where the redoxymorphic features were or the water table.
Right.
Assuming that you guys are more comfortable with that, you just have to provide the information, and you, and you feel you can lower.
Again, the, the septic information was part of the wetlands. It didn't get into this.
Yeah, I'm forgetting, but what I noticed when I looked at the plan that there's an elevation busting the grades or something because the, he's indicating that the stormwater quality goes up to an elevation which is higher than the invert of the outlet.
Bill, Bill looked at that, and he, he said it's a bust.
Okay, all right, so then that's something we can, we can address.
Okay, the, I don't have any, if the commission has any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
No, let's see.
Yeah, is there anything that's going to prevent people from just driving onto the property to cut through to that area?
No, there, the, this driveway here, it's actually shared with the next-door neighbor. This driveway branches off and goes into the Rizio Brothers Cabinet Shop. So no, this, this is, you can drive through.
So you can drive through there and then out onto Maple, if you can, yes, for the full time.
Well, clarification is that they don't have any approval to utilize that. There's no pavement, there's no driveway, so at the moment it's just serving this property. We have a prelim, we have a plan that's been, was submitted. That process has not been resolved yet, but it does not include a driveway going to that part at this point in time.
This is the other property.
But, but the cut, the cut through, you got to go through what is clearly a private property.
Yeah.
It's not that obvious.
It's long and winding, and people aren't going to cut through there.
And then are any plans of parking cars on that?
On, in this area? No, no, there's a parking lot. And just, the, the last person I saw use this as a cut through from Victoria to Maple was a Monroe policeman.
Actually, there is one issue that I'm trying to resolve too, and that is this, i- if anything, this is a cut through for, people might try to cut through to use the multi-use trail, because the trail comes down here, and then it takes a sharp left turn and goes down along the river. And before we built that, the, people were going straight here out to the road, so we have a proposal in to build that, that remaining link of the trail, and one of the things I'm looking at is putting in a couple of trees or something to, or a bough or something to make sure that people understand that they're supposed to take a left and go down the hill. So that's something we're going to be looking at as well. But at the moment, this is just, it's disturbed area, but it's not been approved for use yet.
Anything else, Ryan?
That's it.
I have nothing.
Nothing.
Dave, plantings that are already planted that has established all along Main Street, is any of those plants any invasive species?
I don't know. I know next door, I've walked in that area, there are invasives in there, but this is a little, little better manicured, and, I mean, some, some of the area is lawn, but then it gets very steep. I can take a look and see if I.
Yeah, because, back to the Monroe Conservation Mission, they were making sure there was no invasives. If they are, you're going to remove them anyway, right?
I don't know. Has the, the Wetlands Commission looked at that area?
Which area are you talking about, man?
Along Main Street.
Along Main.
Ah, they did not look at way out there, no.
That's silly. Boy, I'm concerned, I have.
The, I mean, the proposal was totally in the back, so I don't believe that they talked about that.
Yeah, I mean, this area is all grass, all, all manicured and maintained, so I'll, I'll take a look and see what.
That's all I have.
Boom. My only question was, your future new building, are you proposing that within the 100-foot buffer?
Yes, yeah. And as I said, we, we got into, you know, very lengthy discussions with the, you know, that, that building's going to sit.
Partially.
I don't forget, the, the driveway is closing.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, th, these are the wetlands here. This is a wetland network.
Right.
That has a water course associated with it on the property next door.
Okay, thank you. Michael?
I have no questions.
The only comment I have is, you know, reiterating what, what Leon said, the Monroe Conservation and Water Resource Commission is asking that language be included, that only plant material not known to be invasive be used on the site, and monitoring of the planting be done to ensure that invasive species are not. You already have a note here that says that invasive species will be cleared, maybe just saying no, no new invasive species will be included in the plantings. I think you said that your wetlands. I think you said that, um, your wetlands approval included.
Yeah, wetlands has a standard requirement as well. They have to be native, non-invasive.
So I, I think, I think that's pretty much covered.
Yeah, no, I was, I was gonna just reiterate what Scott said, wetlands is all over the invasives.
Okay, I, I have no other comments at this point. Staff have anything?
Nope.
No. All right, let's see if, uh, we have any public comments. Uh, is there anyone here would like to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Any general questions or comments? This is Bernaska.
Karen Bernaska, 99 Bagburn Road, I chair the Monroe Conservation and Water Resources Commission. Just to follow up on what you've said, we believe, and I don't have the planting plan in front of me, that there was some phrase in there that said planting would be at the discretion of the owner, the applicant, whatever, and that is why we, even with the inland wetland approval, we asked that the Planning and Zoning Commission consider putting in wording, specific wording, that is just as you said, that, um, only plant material not known to be invasive be used on the site and that monitoring be done to ensure that happens.
Okay, that, that may have been on a previous plan, we're, the plans that were presented to us are, have already have three revisions.
Ah.
Um, so I, I think that may have been removed.
Yes, we wrote that, we wrote that in mid-October, so there was one after that. But that was our concern, that that, it, it gave, uh, leeway. Even with the inland wetlands, there was discretion given as what was planted, so that was our concern.
I think everybody's now aware of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, inland wetlands comment F dash, um, uh, six says, "Plant species listed on the most current de-cop publication entitled Non-Native Invasive and Potentially Invasive Escalable Plants in Connecticut shall not be introduced on the site."
Okay, good, as we just checked, thank you.
Thank you. Any other general questions or comments? Up to you, Mr. Bjorkman.
Thank you, I just, I heard the, uh, the last application that your next meeting is the fourteenth.
That's correct.
Okay, neither Mr. O'Keefe or I will be in town for that, so the next one is going to be.
December sixth.
Okay. Just to let you know that that's, we will be back in front of you with this.
Okay.
So you meet about a week before, like, Tuesday morning.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Continue to December sixth, seven fifty-seven PM. In accordance with Connecticut General Statutes eight dash seven D, a public hearing will be held in the Town Hall of Council Chambers, South Panhill Road, Monroe, Connecticut, on Thursday, November first, two thousand eighteen, at seven PM or soon thereafter concerning the following. RAA two thousand eighteen dash oh four, file number nine 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 E, subdivision regulation text amendment, open space. Planning and zoning commission proposed Chapter one eleven subdivision of land regulations, text amendments, amending and expanding the standards and requirements of Section one 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 dash three oh one, open space. All right, what do we have for exhibits?
Exhibit one, subdivision regulation text amendment as proposed by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Exhibit two, regional planning referral notice. Exhibit three, adjacent municipality referral notice. Exhibit four, watershed referral notice. Exhibit five, West Cog response to referral. Exhibit six, A R T Conservation Commission comments. And exhibit seven, Norgutuck Valley Regional Plan Agency response to referral. That's it. So what we have tonight is the public hearing relative to amendments to the subdivision regulations as proposed by you. It's dealing with open space, Section one eleven dash three oh three of the land subdivision regulations. So we'll go through the paragraph by paragraph. The opening paragraph is talking about what is open space, how it's sanctioned under the Connecticut State statutes, as well as your plan of conservation development, and that sub, when subdivision is proposed or resubdivision is proposed, that that include a open space component, and talks about, um, what is types of open space as far as a natural preservation, wildlife habitat, scenic vista, et cetera, et cetera, um, and that would be formally reserved or, um, on the plat, um, and preserved in perpetuity and conveyed to either the town or some other approved conservation nonprofit such as a land trust or, um, an organization like that. Um, there are other requirements that they'd not be landlocked, that have access to a street, obviously, for access for not only just making sure the land is okay, but if some open spaces may have trails on them, um, so we wanna provide for those, that access. Um, and then the, the exception would be if it's a budding parcel already that's preserved, um, it could be merged with that, and that parcel wouldn't need its own access, 'cause you can get it through another, if you can get it through another parcel. The only amendment to that section is to give it a title and to add in the resubdivision, so subdivisions or resubdivision that this would apply to. Section C talks about the area of the open space reservation, so in the subdivision, in all subdivisions, the area would be equal to or greater than fifteen percent of the total combined acreage that's proposed to be subdivided, and that at least fifty percent of that would be usable open space, so it wouldn't just be the land that, you know, isn't needed or isn't buildable. Um, and that you could waive this partially if, um, if it include additional areas of wetlands and steep soils, but there's some limits on that. But in all cases, it needs to be proportional to, to the overall standard. Adding a, a, a standard for the method of protection, um, the, part of the application, they would submit a, a, a map. The map could be the subdivision map itself, which shows that what land is the open space, or it could be a separate map, or it also, it would be on the plat one way or the other. Plus a legal instrument. The legal instrument is the, the written document, which talks about, gives its definition, refers to the map and says how it's preserved as open space, so when anyone does the title search, that legally makes it perpetually preserved. And that would all be, um, filed in the clerk's office with the subdivision map. There are some exclusions. These are verbatim requirements under the state statutes, word for word, Section E. Um, those are things that the state says that when you, you can, you can require open space, but in this instance, you can't. Then the new section, relative, subsection F, this is alternance to open space reservation on site. And this is drafted to give some options for instances where the commission determines that open space is not appropriate. So it's really, the first step is you look at the subdivision, you determine if it's a, if that property has land that's appropriate for a subdivision, for open space preservation, and those would be the criteria right up at the front, you know, has wetlands, has streams, has ridgelines, scenic value, um, is connected to another open space, uh, or the neighborhood generally is, is void of open space, or whatever reason. So you first are really looking at getting it on the land, and in those instances where the land doesn't lend itself, um, for instance, it may be a three lot subdivision and it's just a little bit of a stripy land, doesn't have much value for an open space perspective, then you could go to one of these alternatives. And it's up to the commission, it's not up to the applicant, it's up to the commission, but it's based, as you remember, on first being that you reserve it on the land, and if, if there really isn't any value to that, then you could, but, look at these options if the commission deems that okay. Um, and one of those options is, um, reservation in another location. That happened, if you recall, with the Deer Meadow Estate subdivision, um, they gave a two acre parcel somewhere else in town in lieu of putting it in that subdivision. Um, and that two acre was connected to other town open space lands, so it, it, uh, it made that larger, that, that reserve. Another option would be payment in lieu of, that's basically putting money into a fund that does exist already and has existed for many years. Um, and that money would go directly into that fund and can only be used for those, for the purposes of open space. I believe that the restriction currently is for the purchase of open space and perhaps the maintenance of open space. So the money would be directly related to that, and that's all it could be used for. I can't go back, you know, in the general fund and buy a desk, I mean, it's not for that purpose. The, the value based on a payment in lieu, this is set by state statutes, um, so that's sort of verbatim. It's based on ten percent of the market value of the total land being subdivided at the time of subdivision. That would also be based on appraisal, obviously, we'd have an appraisal done to determine that amount, so then, then you get the ten percent. In regard to the option for the in fee lieu payment, there'd be two ways, and this would be at the applicant's, um, option, they could pay the entire fee upfront with the filing of the subdivision map, or, let's say there's ten lots, they could give it piecemeal as they get COs on, on the individual lots. Um, 'cause, you know, in some subdivisions, some lots don't get sold for, for many years. In that instance, there would be a lien placed on the individual lots, and the lien wouldn't be lifted on the individual lot until that portion of that fee was paid. That's the subsection B there. And as I said, all the payment would go into the fund, which does exist. Um, that is the regs. With regards to the, the referral responses, um, Norgutuck Valley did respond. They noted that we didn't really need to give them the referral, we kinda do that as one under code and as a matter of course. There were, was a comment from the Conservation Commission, I'm sure Karen will speak to that herself, and we did get a response from West, the West Cog, and that said this is of local interest with minimal intermistle impact. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Questions?
I have none.
We're gonna start with Ryan, okay?
I have none.
I have none.
No question. Now it's your turn. No questions.
No questions.
I have no questions.
Good.
Um, let's see if we have any comments from this massive audience. Anyone who'd like to speak in favor of this application?
I don't know if you can get this, if you need any more copies, Laura? No, you all said. Uh, Karen Bernaska, ninety-nine Bagburn Road, Monroe, um, Chair of the Conservation and Water Resources Commission. We'd like to thank the entire commission, and one person is coming in to, she wanted to speak again, uh, to thank you for your efforts. We absolutely support this effort. I see Michael O'Reilly, the former chair, who has been working on this for how long? Probably seven years?
Ten years.
Oh, ten years. Anyway, we absolutely support this, uh, the, uh, open space subsides and the fee in lieu. Um, I, we, we thank you for all your time and efforts. We would like to add, or ask you to consider adding under point A, that the, because the conservation would very much like to work together with you, especially on those parcels being considered for passive recreation. And we would, would like to work with you and maybe be able to give you advice, and we'd like to formalize that in this, in this, in the regulations. But we truly appreciate what you've done, and we think it's a great, a great thing to do, and we would like to work with you, like I said, especially on those parcels that you are considering, uh, might have value to the town for passive recreation.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to speak in favor? Anyone who likes to speak in opposition? Any general questions or comments? Okay, well, it's back to you.
I have nothing else of it. You could, uh, if you're of the mind, close the hearing, and later if you want to entertain approval, um, that would be fine.
If we close the hearing, could we address this request from the Conservation and Water Resource Commission as part of our deliberation, or should we do this as part of the hearing?
Um, you could do it either way. Um, if you have questions about it, or you think questions will come from your discussion, I would do it now.
Okay. All right, well, I, you should have all received this memo. We would like to request one addition to the proposed amendment. This addition was unanimously approved at our meeting of October third, two thousand eighteen. We request that the following be added to the end of Section one eleven dash three oh three. The commission shall serve in an in-hand advisory capacity to the P and Z Commission on all areas under consideration that are deemed passive open space. Further to the memo from First Selectman Stephen Vabbert dated October thirty-first, two thousand seventeen, the Conservation Commission has been delegated with general direction and supervision responsibilities of Town and Monroe Passive Open Space. In order to fully carry out our responsibilities, the Conservation Commission would like to work with you in determining passive open space areas and benefits to the town. I am not one hundred percent convinced that we want this to be part of the regulation. We definitely want to work with the Conservation and Water Resource Commission and get their input, but they, they, like any other, um, entity, have an opportunity to weigh in on anything that comes before the commission, and while I welcome their input, I don't know if I want to regulate their input. That's, that's just my opinion, but this is open for discussion with the entire commission, so let's hear what you have to say.
It seems pretty benign, unless you're thinking that this means that they must weigh in on somebody, you think.
Well, that, that's my, that's my concern, is if it's interpreted that they must be part of this decision, and let's say this commission no longer exists, and part of our regulation is that they have to weigh in, and there is no one to weigh in, then our regulations are valid, invalid, um, or we're, we're hamstrung on being able to proceed. Or if, for whatever reason, um, there's a delay in getting response from the commission to the Planning and Zoning Commission that would hold up our, our process. I don't, I, like I, like I said, I welcome this input, I think it's a, it's a valuable and needed input, but I don't necessarily think it should be regulated.
Karen, did you mean this to, to read that you must be, um, part of the discussion, or that you may be part of the discussion?
We, we put shell, but the point is, is we would like to very much to be considered a, or if the commission is going to, uh, accept land as passive recreation, that, that the Conservation Commission will ultimately have, you know, general oversight, not, it's not day to day, we would like to be involved. I think I, my, what I'd say is, we'd like to be involved in the process.
But not make it a requirement that you be involved. I think that's what we're talking about, the distinction.
We are an advisory board, we are not a regulatory board, but we would like to work with you and we'd like to be involved in the process.
Let's just make it vague.
There is, there is provision already in, in the code where the Conservation Commission is advisory in matters, and we, uh, Laura, you can correct me if wrong, we have a, we provide them with every application that comes in to P and Z. So, I mean, there isn't anything that isn't already happening in that regard. So, I mean, I would hope that the Conservation Commission would focus on the entirety of a subdivision application, not just the open space, which I know you will, but, but, uh, so, I mean, to point it out may lead to some confusion in that regard too, that there's a role on the open space, but maybe not on the others, one that's just not really accurate, really over the entire thing.
But I could see the point too, that if, for some reason, if it doesn't go forward to that, so that can be due, there's nothing that says that anybody has to give it to them.
Right, but, but everything that we do is, is, it's not like we decide tonight we're gonna do something and discuss, you know, open space, um, or payment in lieu of open space. Any, anything that we do is publicly noticed. Anything that we do is publicly noticed, every, and especially with a subdivision, because, you know, we have so many subdivisions coming before us that I know one or two could get lost in the mix.
I know, I know, but I'm just saying.
I mean, all of the town agencies and commissions are notified when things are going on. You know, any subdivision would have to go through wetlands first, and the people that are involved in the Conservation and Water Resource Commission, I think, keep a pretty close eye on what's happening with, in the wetlands. So it's not like something's gonna get.
So this kind of has to happen anyway, whether it's, this doesn't have to.
It's going to happen.
Well, it's gonna.
It doesn't have to, but it's going to happen. But my point is, I, I don't feel it should be part of a regulation that it happens.
Well, again, it's in the town code.
Right, they have to review, have their input, right?
Well, it's not a have to, but they are charged with that, that responsibility.
Would it be to our benefit if they were charged?
They are.
They are.
They are.
They're charged, they don't have to. And you're, even if you added something, you're not gonna put something in that they have to either, because it's always advisory, it's always whether they choose to do it or not.
Yeah.
But the, the other caution would be, when you do put things in like that for advisory, you usually want to put timeframes on that, because applicants have expectations of getting their applications processed. So that would be another wrinkle. But that's up to you.
How often do you meet, Karen?
I would, not many meetings.
That, that could put a damper on some stuff that we do, that they're only meeting once a month, and that could put us behind in a lot of stuff.
I'd like to hear what Jonathan and Ryan have to say, too.
I, I think in regard to the way the text amendment is written currently is acceptable, and Monroe Conservation Commission will be able to participate as they have with any other amendment or any other plan we look at.
My only question is, if we wanted to try to make it a little more official, is it something we can look at towards our P O C D when we revise that, having that as a requirement?
Well, that's, there's, there's no, well, we use the P O C D as a planning and a guidebook, more or less. It's not regular code.
I think it'd be more confusing to have it, to include it than than not.
Yeah, I think it's, it's just going to be part of the normal process where with these applications or these potential land donations get vetted through everybody in So my, my opinion is that we not add anything into the open space regulations. And I think that's pretty much what the consensus of the commission is.
Yes.
I don't want to put words in anyone's mouth. Okay. What else, Will? Any, any other public input since we've introduced some new material? Saying none? Okay, close the hearing?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, next up. Site plan review and permit, amendment modifications, we have none. Deliberations and determinations, item number six, time extensions, none. Bond re, seven, bond releases, none. Item eight, meeting minutes, October 25, 2018. I'm tabling that to our next meeting. Pending application deliberations, determinations selected from this agenda. All right, the first two public hearings we had tonight were both continued, so we have nothing to do with those. We closed the hearing on subdivision regulation text amendment. And we deliberated on one potential point. Are there any other issues, questions, comments, further discussion required?
Are you gonna seat someone? What's that? Are you gonna seat somebody?
Um, yeah, because we're missing one. Who's next?
Ken.
Ken, you're seated. So since this is deliberation, Ryan and John, you're not, you're not part.
What do I do this?
What's that?
Do the deliberations now?
We're not gonna, we're not gonna vote on it, but we're going to discuss it and give Will some direction.
Okay. Good, I'm good.
You're good?
Yeah.
I'm good, too.
Right.
I have motion.
Well, the only thing about the town's request is, I mean, we may not be here either in five years, and they may face a more hostile mission.
As far as, as far as having input.
It's all, it's all still part of the process, though.
It is, on, on, kind of, on, informal.
Right.
This just formalizes it a little bit more.
Why couldn't we, why couldn't, like, Conservation Commission wouldn't know about public hearing until a week before, right?
No, they get the application on the onset.
Yeah, I mean, that's because you send it to them. There's no requirement that says you have to send it to them.
No, they come and get it, they don't send it to them. They come and get. We provide a copy of the application, every application.
Is there a requirement?
And they get the agenda, too.
There's no requirement from the commission that they get that.
No.
Right?
They're, not specifically.
No, that's what I'm saying, not specifically.
Well, again, in the town code, it does say they're advisory in that regard, and I'm sure they've been getting the applications from there.
You know, just like, just like A R B, it's an advisory committee. You know, they, they get all of the information for any application. It's part of the process.
No, I, I have that, but there is no.
What's that?
A R B's written into the code. I mean, personally, I would, if you wanted to do something like that, to be more affirmative about it, this isn't where I would do it. I would do it in, in chapter, in article nine, where we talk about, you know, wetlands, and talk about A R B, talk about the Z E O. You could add, add some, a paragraph about the Conservation Commission for more globally, not just open space, but for, you know, kind of putting.
I would rather do that.
That's fine, then I'm gonna, we could do that.
Then why don't we put that on our hit list for the regulation subcommittee? Okay. Is that, is that clear?
That's good for me.
Yep. And what do you think about this draft?
I'm good with it.
Yep, Ken's good.
Good.
So we, we want to instruct Will to proceed with a, an approval letter?
Yes.
Okay. Will, please proceed with an approval letter.
All right. Um.
That's not on the agenda. No, it's here.
That's under my report.
Okay, we have no other pending deliberations, correct?
Well, actually, we could do that in the work session, sorry. I, I handed you out.
Are we on 10 now?
We can, either one. Oh, I thought we went to 10.
No, we're still on nine.
I'm sorry.
I said, do we have any other pending deliberations? Okay, moving on to item number 10, regulation review amendment work session.
If you recall, we had the work session at the last meeting regarding the keeping of animals, and I, was it Ryan that asked, or someone asked about?
Other towns, yeah.
Other towns.
Are we about to talk?
Yes. So I dug up some of the information I had previously with the subcommittee, and I put it into a table and cleaned it up, so you can have reference to whatever town it is.
I see there's maximum numbers. We set them a foot. Interesting. Every town has a set of that. What's that? What'd you say? Was that your idea?
Fairfield.
Maximum numbers. Yeah, but if you see it, some of the setbacks are lower than what we have. Look at Milford.
Milford.
Five feet.
It was a pretty mixed bag.
It, it's pretty, it's all over the place.
Yeah. Well.
They don't have the max number. There's a couple of the max numbers.
Five million of.
New town, you just need 100-foot setback, and that's it?
You need 100-foot setback, because technically, you can't have them unless you have a farm.
And like, oh, okay, yeah. That doesn't should be a, like I mentioned before, a maximum for one acre. Anything beyond one acre, I don't know tables.
Well, text.
I still disagree with that.
We, we are going to a public hearing with this.
Right, in December.
In December, first meeting in December. So, you know, what, what we discussed at our last meeting was the draft that the regulation subcommittee had, had come up with, and that's what we're presenting at a public hearing, but it's a draft, and it's subject to public input and commission input. So we can, we can continue, Paul can come up with a magic number, and we can continue that at our next, well, not at our next meeting, the meeting after our next meeting. But this is, this is helpful. Thank you, Will. Regula, okay, amendment, regulation subcommittee. They're great with the calendar. Next week is going to be a, a pretty busy week for me. The week after, we have our, we have Monday holiday, and we have a Wednesday zoning meeting, so that week is kind of out. Why don't we, on the 14th, look at the last two weeks in November, look at, you know, our calendars and see which day we can pick for a subcommittee meeting? Correspondence, I have nothing. Chairman's report, I also have nothing to report. Well, I'll just mention that, or remind you that we discussed at our last meeting that the town has hired a new town planner, and he is starting on Monday. Staff have anything?
I don't.
Any commissioners have anything?
No.
Um, motion to adjourn.